Notice is hereby given of a regular meeting of the Board of Directors of the District to be held at 105 Port Road, Port Isabel, Texas on the first day of July 2019, at the hour of 5:30 PM for consideration of the business of the agenda below. This notice is posted at the Office of the District on June 26, 2019, at 1:00 PM. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code 551-041-551-050, not less than 72 hours prior to the time of the said meeting. We do have the presence of a quorum. This notice has been posted as required by the law. Absent at this time, we have Director Jason Starkey and Director Adam Alon, who said that he will be attending the meeting later tonight. May I please have everyone stand for the Fledge of Allegiance?
Fledge of Allegiance, which is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to item three, invitation to the audience for public comments. Includes anyone in the audience, staff, board, directors?
I have one. We were thinking about the next agenda for the next meeting on the 10th. It's right around the corner, so we have a Friday day off. So we don't have a lot of agenda items that we can hold off until the 24th. So just wanted to see the board, would you want us to cancel the next meeting? Since we're like back-to-back. I think there's like three items that we have right now.
For the 11th, I guess, would be the, no, for the 10th. Meeting on the 10th. We got a regular scheduled meeting on the 10th.
We're here, and then this is the next meeting.
Right.
We're gonna have everything for you.
Thursday.
We're off this day, so.
Friday.
And we only have one agenda right now. We can hold off until here, we're about to go. Finish the party.
That's right, look me, I don't have a problem.
There's gonna be a few, not just staff, it's gonna be out of vacation these two weeks. So we'll need to burn without, get off.
I'll.
Yeah, as long as we don't have any time-sensitive stuff.
If we do, we can always come back and say, okay.
I guess the one that we pulled off the agenda is the only one I'm really thinking about. The one that we just pulled off the agenda is the only one I'm thinking about. But if we have time on that, then I'm good with it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, please. And I'd like to recognize, and I bring this to mind, my grandson, as well as a lot of other boys in the community, ended up there, baseball season, about a month ago, Laguna Madre water, Laguna Madre, what did it softball, baseball?
Baseball.
And you know, yeah, whatever. But you know, yeah, your grandson and mine. You know, we have a lot of employees that coach, assistant coach, and give of their time for this thing. And it's not just the Little League, but for all the extra that the employees do, I just want them to know that I recognize that additional effort. And it goes a long way when you see your employees out there, you know, putting in extra.
I see them out there, it's very appreciable, but they take extra time to do that.
Yeah. So my thanks.
Think you're the kids better than being out in the street and all that. Yeah, it's a good thing to have. Thank you all the ways for that. I know we have a couple here.
Very nice.
Jimmy, Jimmy?
Well, who's the coach or who teaches or coaches?
Well, there's a bunch of coaches.
Yeah, coaches. And then others are.
Yeah.
Very nice.
I also have a general comment. Just a few people have mentioned to me about the response time on the water leaks now, that they're really impressed with it. You know, that the information they're getting from staff about the fact that they can recognize a leak right away, they're very happy about that. So I'm getting some good feedback from people in regards to our water leak, or the fact that it gets caught right immediately.
Yeah. Staff, anyone want anything, talk about anything, share anything? Okay. For the record, we have Dr. Alon joining the meeting. We'll be moving on to item number four. Consider or discuss for possible approval the minutes of the regular meeting on May 22, 2019.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Houston. Second by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving on to item five, General Manager's Report.
Welcome, Mr. Chairman and members of board. I wanted to bring some information back from the Association of, on Board of Directors Conference. They attended some sessions there that they talked about cityization, you know, facts about it, things that can happen, things that can be wrong. And also, I want to know one that's on taxes and bonds, you know, what can be to our district, and how to proceed and get the help, and stay and other, other ways, you know, grow mental age. And then the effect the district communication through media, vet, you know, the human methods that are coming out, you know, Facebook and all those. So they talked about a lot of good stuff and pros and cons, and they had those very good information that they had. Besides, I think there were like over a hundred vendors on there. But why I see them, there's too many people there, where I, you know, a lot of people I didn't know and not seen before, but there was a lot of vendors on there, so. It was a great time. I think maybe for next time, it'd be nice for more of the folks that, you know, that would be there. Be nice to at least go out and take some time off from work. And hopefully, so. The other one that I have here is Liquid Environmental Solutions is a company that picks up grease from the restaurants. And they met with Robert and Mr. Carlos, and they, and I never met him, but the information that they gave me on the booklets is City of Westlaco has that program going. And what they do is they pick up all the grease from the City of Westlaco, grease traps, waste. And they, their services is, is collection of the grease. What they do is recycle it, so they sell it to somebody else. And we pick it up, they get paid for it, and then they sell it, the grease that they pick up. We need that more waste going out there. And it helps the entity in itself with savings. They mentioned a lot of savings in that report. See, they kind of cleans the, they cleans sewer lines, leaving the grease, you know, in a timely manner where they, they know when to pick it up. And as a matter of fact, that company has already picked up like 25 of their customers, the restaurants. So it mentions here, these savings will come from a reduction in treating and processing grease at the wastewater treatment plant, where all that grease goes in there, it takes more energy to, you know, dissolve the grease and get rid of it. And then a reduction in the cost of responding to sewer backups, where grease can plug up the sewer line, and this reduces callouts for the employees to go out clean the lines, pick up sewer or it's overflowed. And, and it's a lot of cost savings and the chemicals needed, you know, for the, for the treatment of the grease hotspots that they call closely, close to the restaurants. They're called hotspots because they get plugged up often, and then we get calls for them to go and clean the lines, and add more chemicals to it that they use it. And it's a good company, and what they want to do is work with the water district. And if the board is interested, they can do a presentation for us and show us what they have. I haven't gotten to see that, but I know that Mr. Carlos and Robert and Mr. Carlos, and they were impressed with their processes that they do. So there's a, it's like we can possibly do the same as City of Westlaco, like, I guess in agreement with them, if they can pick up some of the restaurants, and see how they can work it out and allow the district pay anything. They get, I guess, like the restaurants, like.
I work for them.
Then that's the same company that probably picks up your grease traps.
I think the only comment I have, though, is us as a public entity have to be cautious representing a private entity.
Right, right.
That's the only.
So that's the reason that I'm saying that we don't pay them anything, or they don't pay us anything in this agreement, just maybe sending out our huge, our piece to, you know, see who qualifies the best for doing that job, and maybe authorize them, not just necessarily that company, there's others, other companies that do the same thing. We get a good company, you know, that can do that for, if they get paid by the restaurants, we can agree to something like that. But just like a contractor, when they go out and install a sewer line or water lines, we have certain contractors that do the rest job, and we have listed about, about 10 contractors that we authorize to go ahead and let them do the job. And some of them have failed, and we don't recommend those companies. So it would be similar to that, and the project has to get with also the, the, but if you all are interested, we can get them back and do a presentation for us, that's probably true.
I was interested in code enforcement on the island, recommended that the gentleman talk to me, Mr. Dana King. So I called Mr. Gomez to meet with him, because I wanted to see what the company was all about. And it is a very professional company, but like you, I have some concerns as well. And some of them are really around the competitive part of doing that business, because if we pursue what they want to do, as they presented it, as Mr. King presented it, we would be, in my mind, I think we would be eliminating every other competitor that goes out there and does this. That's a concern to me. So having looked at it, though, I think that there's a way that we can formulate, there's a couple of different things we can do. We can, we don't have to do anything with any one vendor. We can have multiple vendors, if that's what we choose. Basically, everybody would be complying with the policy that we have.
That's the key thing.
That's the key thing. So now, in all fairness, not everybody's gonna compete to that level of LDS. That's probably the truth of the matter. They're a very professional company. They actually sell to their own company, that does the cleaning up of the grease. And I think it definitely would accomplish what Mr. King said, it would raise the standard. But in the process, I do not want to go down this road of eliminating any competitor, because Westlaco did have to go fight a case against that.
That's that, we're representing a private entity.
And so even though, even though they won, it is a concern, it's something we need to be cautious of how we pursue it. As far as the billing goes, my understanding is we would be doing the billing. In other words, you would not get an invoice from them, you would get it from us at Castor Water. And that's something we need to also think about, because we have chosen in the past not to do those kinds of things.
Like the trash issue, we're getting back into the, we're getting back into third party. That's my opinion, and I think we're creating a lot of work.
We talked about that.
Yeah, if you guys want to look at it, there's nothing wrong with looking at it and see what benefit it could have for us. But the other part of it is, and I mentioned this to Mr. King, I said, there's nothing to keep me from just putting my policy in place and having every vendor comply to it.
Yes.
So if it's something you guys want to look at, fine, but I do have some concerns going.
We've been talking about hiring an inspector.
Yes.
We've been talking about it. So in this case, we probably wouldn't have to hire an inspector, because they expect.
Yeah, they kind of would, they kind of, that's what they do, they encourage, and through even some additional advertising that we would pay for, they would push our platform or ID or whatever, and get everybody on the schedule. But, you know, that's, we need to figure out, okay, we need to think about, okay, how is it gonna work when now you're getting that invoice from me?
Can we, I'm sorry, Alex, but this is public comment.
Yeah, so anyway.
Let's move this, move this along.
Anyway, I just, I do have, if you guys want to look at it, fine, but I do have some.
It's a good program, but just everything we've discussed, we need to iron out.
Yeah, and I don't want to waste my time on something like that if the board doesn't, if not in the meeting. Something you are giving.
No, it's good.
Okay, so they can do a presentation, possibly for this meeting. Give us information.
Next meeting is on the 24th, we're not having one on the 10th.
The next one that I have here is the update on the audio and video contract, video. We have met June, we have met with Jason Garza, the producer. He went out to the river station and all the way to the wastewater plant, back to the wastewater treatment, to get a view of everything that is going to be, uh, video with a drone. And then last Friday, the second meeting was with Omar Diaz, the director, which was, we met with him June 28, was the schedule. So he gave us a schedule of all the information that he is looking at. He has information already of where the stations are at, and then, I think his market and Moi, too, have met with him for the scripts that they're writing, about the wastewater plants and the pump stations and wastewater treatment plants. So once they, they complete that, they're gonna, I think they did that today. Or maybe by tomorrow, they're gonna send them the, all the photographs and the pages that they made on the, on the information. So by the end of this week, there's a schedule that, once he corrects everything and sends it back to us, and we'll review it and approve by, I think it's Thursday or Friday, if he's gonna send it back to us.
Mr. Gavine?
Yes, sir.
We've not approved that contract.
We have.
When?
Last, last week. The board didn't have to prove it.
Oh, okay, well, it's under $5,000.
Right.
Okay.
It's under, first of all, and I thought I had made a mistake myself on that, but I confirmed that you don't have to, the board approved it, so.
Maybe, maybe you should have said, we hired this firm under that. I mean, I thought maybe I missed a meeting or something.
Well, we haven't caught you up yet, because we haven't, we haven't been together yet.
Okay.
And according to the specs that we sent out, they really wanted a plan with everything. The other companies didn't send us videos or information on anything, so we didn't have it. So that's the only company that did, so hopefully. But we can see what they can do for us, and we see that they have all our, all our information that we requested, all the specs of the, I mean, that's why we wanted that. Hopefully, and I think you did see a small video of Isla Blanca Park, so it's pretty interesting. But anyhow, on the third or last week of July, will be the shooting, will be scheduled, and if you go video and do other, the video. The shooting will be completed in two days, and then by mid-August, this is by mid-August or the beginning of September, final for that's when we do it. I believe that we'll be inviting you, I think Jason wanted to be included in that. So we have the first video to review and approve, which is possibly for, maybe, the weekend, or?
No, the first video, it won't be until August.
Okay. But the review and approval of the script, we will.
The script will be during the week, during the week that we.
Well, we'll call you, and Jason, I think wanted to be included. And then also, just mentions that there will be a lot of communications between the vendor and us, because we need to review, create a scoreboard and a vet recording. And they would be sending for us, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Carlos. Moving on to item six, consider or approve a resolution of the Laguna Madre Water District establishing the ad hoc bond planning committee to review and make recommendations to the Board of Directors regarding a possible bond election, Resolution 173-07-19.
And this resolution needs to be approved before we move forward on the rest of the agenda?
Do you want me to read the resolution, or are we good?
Can I ask a question? Number one, the resolution number and your agenda item with two different numbers, but why is it 16? I thought we were gonna have 15 with three appointees.
16 was the total number of people who volunteered, so it's up to you. You can cut it down if you want, but it was close, close to the number that we want. It's, the amount on the committee is up to you, how much you want. If you don't want the full number of members, then we have to figure out a process for.
The item we're voting on is to do the committee, not the nominees at this point, correct?
Well, yeah, that's another item.
That's the following agenda item is.
I'll make a motion to approve the committee.
And believe me, the resolution number is a typo.
I'll second it. Motion made by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. I think you've got a great list of names here, and I also think it's a very, very good list of names. So 16 people giving up their volunteering time, that speaks volumes. Moving on to item number seven, consider or remove from the table the following item tabled at the regular meeting on May 22, 2019. Consider or approve the bond committee nominees selected for the upcoming bond election. So moved. Motion made by Mr. Houston. Seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, none opposed, thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, consider or approve the bond committee nominees selected for the upcoming bond election.
I'm okay with all 16 names, I'll make a motion to appoint.
Motion for approval by Mr. Houston for the nominated names.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, are there any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Again, that's a very good list of names. Moving along to item number nine, consider and discuss for possible approval of task authorization with Freese and Nichols, Inc. for engineering services to support appeal letters for FEMA large project closeouts for Port Isabel, Andy Bowie, and Luis Sachi, elevated storage tanks.
Yeah, on this one, we have discussed that we provide information from a professional engineer, who we have now, Free Nichols. They brought up the request that we asked them to provide for us, so we can send to FEMA.
There are three really good reports that are really helpful, and you feel, they pretty much are the response themselves.
Second.
Motion for approval by Mr. Avalos, seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed, none, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item number 10, Director of Operations Report.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first report that I'm submitting is the monthly service call, the callouts for the distribution and collection department. As in the previous reports, I'm comparing the current month, current year month with the last year's month. Does anyone have any questions? Most of the items are pretty well self-explanatory.
Tell us why it went up so much.
I'm sorry?
Why did it go up so much, almost 200? Sounds like we had a busy month compared to last year.
Yeah, some of them deal with the, like, the pull meters. We have something that we hadn't had before, which was 84 there, which was quite a few. And those pull meters are, for one reason or another, the billing department is pretty much reporting on those. Pull meters, what happened is with the Badger meter system, we had one meter that was reporting two different times. One was a no. A compound meter, which was low chamber and high chamber. Under low consumption, it would report it one time. If it was high consumption, it would go through the high chamber. So now with the Mueller meter, we only have one meter, and when they replaced it, it left the other meter on there, although it was the same meter. So that was one of the reasons that it went up quite a bit, on the distribution side.
The other one is this tampering with the water meter deal, that's, that's a large increase, too.
That and the work on, on meter boxes, we've been installing new meters in a lot of places. We've had to replace a lot of these box meters that are in there. That's another 70 right there, so that's 150 between those two items.
The information, though, is that stuff that people calling, requesting?
Yes, sir. They call customer service, and it can be a hundred number of items that they call about. Any other questions? Going on to the next report, it's the update on the sludge removal from the lagoon. I have submitted some pictures for you all to look at. The lagoon is pretty much completed. I do want to rectify a quote that I had previously made on the lagoon. I had stated originally that the cost of cleaning that lagoon was 180,000. My interpretation on cleaning that was to clean it out the way we did. Actually, when I was told that, they meant to dredge the lagoon. That was the actual cost of 180,000. To clean the lagoon the way we did was anywhere from 430,000 up. That was the quote that we were given. And also, by cleaning this lagoon, it saved the other possibility that we were looking at, was making a new lagoon, and that could have been anywhere from a million to 4 million on the cost of that new lagoon. So the actual cost savings on the lagoon and cleaning it up the way we did was a lot, lot higher than what had been reported in the past. I just wanted to correct that. And we haven't received.
We're good for a number of years in, in other words.
Yes. This should be good for another 15 to 20 years. We just need to take care of that pump that's under the concrete vault there in the last picture that I showed you all. We need to take care of that, I'm sorry.
And is there any work that we are expecting to do on the big, on the other one, where we decant to, the big, I guess where the raw water comes in?
Well, that's something that we, you've been on the reservoir?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's something that we are looking at doing, but one of the things that we're putting in the budget for next year is a dredging system, so that we can not only clean Reservoir 3, but also continue to clean the lagoon as we need to, to clean the reservoir at Water Plant Number 1, and to also clean the reservoir over there by the river station, Reservoir Number 4. So that would help us tremendously. Hopefully, when we get through the budget, y'all can see that, and that's why we're. And that's why we're looking at that. And as a matter of fact, the reservoir number three is there at water plant two that already has in some sections uh up to five, six meter sludge.
Yeah, we're we're, I think that's what I remember is where we are dumping the water is where it's accumulating all around there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we take care of that before it gets any worse.
I think that's the expense that I was thinking about, what that's going to cost us.
Any questions on this? The third item that I had was the meter count per day. Uh, I provided a report to you all and it's it's a last minute item, but the reason I do that is so that I can get the latest count uh as far as the meters that have been installed. It's right there so that you can see. Uh, I have made an adjustment uh where it says compound meters. There are some meters that are not going to be changed out. And again, that that deals with the two inch uh compound meter because it's double counted with Badgers. It would be double counted with the Mueller meter. It doesn't have to be, but when we replace it, it replaces one of the meters, which is the same one, and leaves the other one there. So that meter is not going to be uh replaced. Then we do have some fire line meters that we're looking at that will not be replaced as well. So that's yet to come. So our our count for Laguna High, Laguna Vista meters that we need to complete at thirty-four, we're trying to see if we can complete those uh this week. By the middle of next week at the latest. And then at South Padre, we've got approximately two hundred and sixty meters that we need to finish up and and replace. And then here in Port Isabel, we have a little over nine hundred that we we need to replace. So we're about at eighty-two percent complete. We're still, I think we're still pretty much in in.
First, first of August, middle of August?
Uh, probably the end of August. That's what we're looking at. Any questions? That's it. It's my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eleven, consider and discuss for possible approval of the reclassification of personnel.
Yes, sir. Uh, what I have submitted to you gentlemen is reclassify, reclassification of the HR administrator or HR benefit administrator. Uh, in reviewing the the title, that HR administrator administrator is basically a person that handles the benefits. And our HR person handles more than just benefits. Uh, she does quite a bit as far as the job is concerned. And we wanted to reclassify her so it will show where she actually should be. That's one. The other is the reclassification of the senior operators. And what we're trying to do here is set a stronger line of succession with the senior operators. Uh, give them the opportunity to learn what the managers are are doing. Uh, in case, well, whenever the managers are out, they they take over. Right now, they really don't have authority other than what the manager tells them, but as far as the actual duties, they don't have them. As an assistant manager, that would give them the duties or the responsibility that they will need and be able to do exactly what the manager does. So I'm asking for reclassification of senior managers to assistant managers.
Everyone's on board?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion. Motion made by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Ladan. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
There are? Any opposed? None? Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you to all the staff. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number thirteen, Director of Finance report. Excuse me. Item twelve, consider and discuss odor complaints?
Oh, yes. I I put this in here uh because we do still get some odor complaints. But the problem is that we just get a complaint that's saying, well, we we have a customer called and complaining about the sewer plant. The reality is that uh in most cases where we've investigated with little information that we have, it's not been the sewer plant. And I'm putting this in here so that maybe you gentlemen can help us in respect to if you get a call from uh from an individual about an odor or a sewer complaint. If we can get at least three different questions answered. One is the location where that individual is uh when they smell the the odor. The other is the time of day when they smell the odor. And if they're able to determine the possible direction of the wind. Some of the odor, some of the odor complaints that we've gotten here in the past uh is concerning the Laguna Vista Sewer Plant. And when we go investigate, we find the complaint is upwind from the sewer plant. Which tells us that it's not the sewer plant. And then another complaint that we went to investigate, we went, Carlos, a couple of the sewer plant operators, the manager uh for the sewer plant and and water, we went around the lagoon uh outside the Laguna Vista Sewer Plant. And we didn't really smell anything while we were going around, but once we got downwinded from that uh lagoon, it smelled bad. It really smelled bad. But it wasn't sour. You could tell it's a different smell. And a lot of that deals with the algae where the water dries up. And it just forms a kind of a gray, white layer. But when you step on that, it's still green on the bottom. And as soon as you step on that, that odor come in and hit you really hard. And the other thing we were thinking about was possibly the uh the resacas or the lakes there inside the uh the golf course or in that area. Because of the stagnant water that that builds up, we sometimes get complaints about that. As a matter of fact, one of the other complaints that we've dealt with where we went, I mean, we went looking all the way around. Uh, it wasn't until after I spoke to uh two guys from the sewer plant and the electrical manager, Jimmy, that were driving by the water plant. They smelled the the odor in front of the Port Isabel uh golf course or Laguna, I'm sorry, South Padre Island golf course. But as soon as they drove into Holly Beach Road, that smell faded. And so when we went out there, there was no odor. It's already gone. But we did, what we did discover was that the personnel from the golf course had been pumping the water under that tunnel that that there in the golf course. It had a lot of stagnant water. And they pumped it out. We took pictures of it. I I talked to Mr. Sarsky about it. And that water was really bad where it laid a just a thin layer of really, it was a little, a little gross, but it was there. It finally went away, but that's what it was. At least that's where we concluded, because we couldn't find anything anywhere else. So again, I, we're just asking for a little bit of help.
Where are the people that are calling? Where do they live?
Most of them are there uh right by, close to the sewer plant. But again, this last few complaints that we've gotten, they're they're upwind from from the sewer plant. And now with, we've got Microsoft that's being pumped in there. We've got the uh, a, what is that?
Odor control.
The odds?
The Microsoft one.
The Microsoft, the other.
The pods, odds.
The pods. We're putting, we put on top of it. And then we've got odor blocks that we're setting outside. And we've been there and you really, it's very few times that we go there and if you get up on it, right where the sewer comes in, you may be able to smell it. But most of the time you can't, because we have those pods and and that Microsoft that we're putting in there.
You know what you hold on, remember that you sell them?
Right. The Acculog, yeah, the Acculog, uh, we've been sitting it, uh, been given, uh, Mr. Sarsky the reports, except for this very last one. It does jump up to a little over a thousand part per million. But on the outside, uh, it goes like from zero to eighteen parts per million. So it's.
That's the hydrogen sulfide, right?
Yes, sir.
The odor is inside the pot.
Yes. Right.
So you guys think it's something else? It's not our sewer plant?
No.
Well, with the land from the southeast, everybody at the golf courses are going to that.
Yeah. It hasn't been blowing north and down, right? Is it just coming off the big flat of the bay to hit those people? That's the only place I can.
That's another, that's another area that we that we looked at.
Right, sir.
And and when it starts drying up, the uh those flat areas there in the bay, they they do tend to smell as well.
Especially on the low tide.
Yeah.
But the odor complaint came from also Mr. Christiansen?
Yes.
Backside of the big lagoon, the waste lagoon? It's a big pond. It's been there for many years. I don't know, since the early fifties or the eighties. So that accumulation.
How long have we pumped into there?
Uh, just since two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, two thousand and six.
Five, five, so anyways, ten, twelve years. When was the first time Christiansen said something? And we haven't changed anything we've been doing?
As a matter of fact, what we're pumping into that lake is effluent water which has chlorine.
It's treated.
Okay, it's treated water. And the second part to that, it it doesn't even reach to where the uh, huh?
The outfall.
Yeah. It's not that much because during the week, Monday through Friday, we pump that effluent water into the golf course.
And it doesn't smell there.
And it's only on Saturdays and Sundays that we pump it out to the.
And then we've had a lot of rain and when it rains, it fills up.
Yeah.
That's the only time that that big lake lagoon fills up and rains a lot. I think throughout the years, it accumulated a lot of algae growth on the sites. And when we walked around that big lagoon, it's way inside, out on the north end, that's when we started smelling something in there.
Is that the way the wind was blowing?
Yes, the wind blew that way. So we smelled it on the other side, the north side of that, it was strong.
The one time that.
And that's where the Christiansens are, right?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, they own all their properties, but they live on the five ten.
Right.
The one time that we did smell uh something that the golf course was getting a wind of was when we had the north wind. But it wasn't the H two S that we have there in the uh.
Sewer plant.
Sewer plant. That was coming from the cattle and the animals that they have behind the lagoon. I mean, it's it's very distinct smell. You could, you could tell.
That one, it looked like the shrimp farms out there.
Yeah.
Charles and I went up there and I didn't notice it.
Yeah, we talked about that last time. The only place I've ever smelled is the, I don't know, our our pump station by the first hole. I smell that when I go walk by it.
The pump station where?
The lift station.
Thirty-seven.
We investigated all that.
Right.
The one closest to the clubhouse.
Oh, okay. That, that lift station, yeah.
They were treating it with a chemical.
Microsoft.
Maybe it's better. That was like a month ago I smelled it.
That patient has a lot of grease in it.
Mm-hmm.
We think it's due to the, they have fresh mold there, so.
Let's bust them if they're dumping grease.
Yeah.
Start our inspector there.
So at least we're good to find out where another of these things were happening. Yes. That was on five ten, that was a ton.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
We're moving along to thirteen, item thirteen, Director of Finance report.
So I wanted to advise the uh, the board that our new customer portal is ready to to go. So the plan is to include these letters that are included in your packet, include those with the bills. Uh, so since we've been installing in in phases, beginning with South Padre Island and the Laguna Vista, installing of the new meters. To get the most out of the new customer portal, the customers should really have the the smart meter. Uh, if they if they have the conventional meter, they can still use it, but they can't take advantage of all the the data. So what we're going to do is we're going to start including this letter with the bills for cycle three, which is going to go out next week, which is South Padre Island. And then we'll we'll continue with the next billing cycle with the Vista and then end up with Port Isabel. Uh, so this is available already for anybody. If you already have a smart meter installed at your home or your business, you can already log into the website. Uh, lmwdwatersmart.com and you can claim your your account. All you need is your account number and uh everything else is is, you know, your zip code and your email.
Can you also add this on to the water district website?
Yes, I'll be posting it to the website uh when those letters go out, put it up on the website. So anybody who, you guys can log in today if you already have your your smart meter installed. You guys can log in today and start using it. We've already invited some of our.
Already active?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, we have a few. Uh, we invited our staff and, you know, just word of mouth, if you know that, you know, your neighbor already has, you know, a smart meter installed, we've, you know, invited a few people and they've already started using it and and you know, we we only have a few people signed up right now. I think it's like twenty or so people that have signed up so far. But we're about to start including these and putting it out there so that people can see.
Looks nice. Says, I want to pay my bill.
Yeah, so it's totally compatible with the with smartphones.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item fourteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of requests for qualifications RFQ for immediate affairs consultant services.
So um, this is a a result of our discussions on getting a a public information officer. And so our recommendation is to go with a outside company that would provide these media relations services. Um, and so I'm including this in the packet so that you all can approve. If you approve the the RF, the RFQ, uh, we'll go ahead and and post it and see if we can get anybody to bid on these, providing these services. The bulk of it is the scope of services. That would be provided.
Questions, comments? Is this for approval?
Who do you look to be able to send that out to? I mean, what? PR firms, advertise, I mean.
We would advertise in in the newspaper. We would also put it on the, there's purchasing sites like bidding sites where different vendors will sign up and see when something comes up in their area of expertise. Um, so we would put it up there and we would also um, look for local firms, uh, people that, that uh, we would invite those personally, uh, call them up and see if they're interested.
So move. Motion made by Mr. Houston. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Um, before I second this, I would like to just mention, uh, because I do want to move forward with this. But uh, I still think that, uh, I'm obligated to go through the RFQ process, but I still think that we'd be better off hiring somebody internally. I mean, somebody that is going to work for us as opposed to a contract.
A third party?
A third party. Uh, that's my feeling on it. Uh, I, I just don't think that a third party is going to dedicate the same, they're not going to have the same form of dedication. You know, and granted, I understand why we're doing it this way. I think there's a question as to how much work is involved for this person. It might not be a lot, you know, and, and I understand that. Uh, but I, I have a hard time accepting the fact that a third party is going to represent my best interest. That they're not coming to this office every day and experiencing the problems that we experienced.
I concur.
We ought to be able to reach out to different.
But uh, but if we, you know, we can learn something from this process, great. Yeah, so I'll second that.
Second made by Mr. Avalos, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
I abstain.
For the record, uh, Dr. Lallana abstained. I'm in favor of motion passes. Moving along to item number fifteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of purchasing card policy.
So the um, um, the district had a um, um, one credit card in, in, when I started here that's been uh, expanded for, um, to allow for some of the management to use credit cards. And uh, this, this is a, I want to establish a policy so that everybody knows what uh, what are their responsibilities uh, in, in using the uh, the credit card, the company credit card.
What was the, the basis for doing something like this? Because we've never done that before, right?
Like, like I said, the, we had a credit card.
We did have one before.
And, and that's been expanded since.
Okay.
But no policy?
Been no policy.
The only thing I ask is obviously, I, it's, pretty much everything's paid, but you can get travel back or bonus cards or all of that stuff, I mean, is it rewards or, or looking at anything like that or cash back or something? So I mean, if you use a card, you should get a, you should get a benefit back as a reward.
Yes, points do accumulate on this particular card that we've been using, uh, points do.
And who accumulates those or uses those or how does, how's the distribution in all fairness? I mean, that's the.
I'm.
Well, it's under my name and we're collecting that for the, the district to utilize for maybe uh, for the summer party or group party uh, weekend.
Employee appreciation.
No, that's fine, I just want to have that discussion. I mean, typically you get a rewards card and you get one percent back or two percent back and you're dealing with this, these large transactions, the stuff can add up and, you know.
The plan is to use it for employee appreciation events.
Okay, that's great.
So we've been saving uh, since twenty thirteen that I got in the district, do you mind your decision? I thought I would have. I want to, uh, you just uh, gave them back so we can save them in account so we can utilize for the whole district. I just myself or anybody, it's for everyone.
Previously, there were under Mr. Zatelo. Me. And you can.
No, if it's your card, your responsibility, I mean, that's, that's, I'm not getting into that. I just want to know where we're going forward is, is, is my concern.
So now it's.
Okay.
That's all.
Yeah, my question was.
We're going to decide ourselves, like, uh, staff to, you know, for. But you can let the board know and, and uh, every time we do something. We're planning to have a summer, that we, uh, August, I believe.
August seventeenth.
For the board too, you know, that.
I did ask uh, Mr. Saman Diego about, about the policy and if he had any concerns with it. Um, and he said that my understanding is that these are for purchases, to expedite purchases that otherwise would have to go to, for uh, uh, to try to get a better price or whatever. Uh, and that most of these purchases are under, they have a five hundred dollar limit. Okay.
We only had one card.
And that was my only concern is that, uh, is that, is that, is it something that, you know, you guys uh, finance and, and uh, Mr. Saman Diego can manage or anticipate any issues with that, everybody having their own card?
Purchasing nowadays involves a lot more of, of online uh, uh, transactions, you know, that a lot more things are purchased online than they were uh, before in the past. And uh, you know, everybody wants a credit card.
Especially, especially licenses and TCQ or, or, you know, licenses and trainings and all that, to go to a party.
About that, there's also the issue when the employees are out there working and they need a hinge or they need some screwing, they just go and, and get them to eat and it's just a few dollars, it's not much.
Right.
It's just expedite, get that job done a lot quicker.
Right.
Yeah, in the past, that was very inefficient. They would come over here, uh, ask for petty cash, then go, go to the store, buy it and then uh, um, come give us the receipt, you know, or, or, or go back, fix whatever they needed and they come back and give us the receipts for petty cashes.
So I shouldn't expect a hike in expenditures just because we have a new policy?
You shouldn't, no.
Okay.
I'll make a motion differently. Motion made by Mr. Houston, taken by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item sixteen, consider and discuss for possible approval of the financial report of April twenty nineteen.
I'll move to approve.
Motion made for approval by Mr. Avalos. Seconded by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, any opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item seventeen, consider and review expenditures from May sixteenth through June fifteenth. Questions, comments?
Move to acknowledge.
Motion to acknowledge by Mr. Houston.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Avalos, are all those in acknowledgement?
Yes.
Great, any opposed? Anything opposed? None, motion carries, thank you. Moving along to item eighteen, executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, V T C A, Government Code, Section five five one zero zero one, under Section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney, under Section five five one zero seven four, personnel matters, under Section five five one zero eight seven, economic development. Item A, update on Long Island water distribution and wastewater collection improvements. Item B, update on legal matters with council concerning open records requests. Item C, update on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand and eight. Item D, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of the raw water rate. Item E, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to its general manager. Need a motion to go into executive session at six twenty-nine P M. So, uh, motion made by Mr. Houston, seconded by Dr. Lallana, are all those in favor?
Aye.
They are, we are in executive session, do we need a break or are we going to continue?
Let's go.
Okay, we are in executive session. Need a motion to come out of executive session at seven oh six P M.
So move.
Motion made by Dr. Lallana. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Houston, are all those in favor?
Aye.
We are out of executive session. Uh, executive session permitted by the Open Meetings Act, V T C A, Government Code, Section five five one zero zero one, ed sequence, under Section five five one zero seven one, consultation with attorney, under Section five five one zero seven four, personnel matters, under Section five five one zero eight seven, economic development. Item A, update on Long Island village distribution and wastewater collection improvements. A motion to proceed as directed.
It doesn't make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, just need to uh, proceed as directed. Item B, update on legal matters with council concerning open records requests, proceed as directed. Item C, update on FEMA related to Hurricane Dolly two thousand and eight, proceed as directed. Item D, update on legal matters concerning ratepayers' appeal of the raw water rate, proceed as directed. Item E, deliberation regarding the evaluation of district employee to its general manager. Uh, we're going to postpone that into the July twenty-fourth meeting. Need a motion to come out of executive session. I'm sorry, need a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven oh seven.
So move.